Yeah, it does.
All right, good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock or they're close enough. We're going to begin with a work session this evening. Discussion item number one is Gardner Municipal Airport. Brian, you've got some presentation for us, correct?
Correct.
Very good.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight's discussion on the Gardner Municipal Airport is broken down into four areas. The first includes a brief history of the Gardner Airport and its current operations. The second identifies issues raised by the auditors. The third is how FAA grant eligible airports in Kansas are managed. And the fourth are airport options as Gardner moves forward. We have included both an aerial photograph as well as a recent photograph of the airport. The airport does sit on approximately 129 acres and has an FAA designation of K-34. As far as history, the airport's beginning was in 1935 as an emergency airfield for male route pilots. They would use the airport when conditions were no longer conducive for continued flights. The airport was given to the Department of Navy for training while Naval Air Station Olathe was being constructed at what is now New Century Air Center. The terminal was built by the Navy in 1941 to 42. And the Navy did turn the airport back to the city of Gardner with the stipulation that the site remains for aeronautical purposes. Current usage of the airport, it is a safe haven for recreational flyers and aviation enthusiasts. It's part of the federal system of airports, the national plan of integrated airport systems, and as such is eligible for FAA grants. There are currently about 100 based aircraft at the Gardner Municipal Airport. And there is a waiting list for aircraft owners in the area wanting to rent hangar space. There is an existing airport master plan. That master plan was updated and approved in March of 2010, and it is available on our city website. The master plan does call for improvements to runways, additional land acquisition, along with increased hangar space. It also calls for the extending and paving of runway 1735, which is the north and south runway. Drainage improvements have been made and land acquisition for the purpose of extending the runway have already begun. Adjustments to runway 826 are anticipated to shorten the runway protection zone, the RPZ, at the east end of the runway. Currently, the runway protection zone extends over Waverly Road. And so by shortening the runway on the east side, we pull that runway protection zone back on the other side of Waverly. We are also currently developing minimum standards for the airport. And the plan does include recommendation for improvements extending 20 years into the future. Yeah, this layout shows what the master plan identifies as somewhat of the ultimate configuration for the airports. The areas highlighted in gray are part of the airport as of today. And the areas highlighted in yellow are identified as future needs. In 2014, the size more property along Highway 56 was purchased. This picture does not reflect that. As far as the audits, the 2014 audit findings were previously presented to both the governing body and most recently to the airport board. And the findings are fairly self-explanatory. They do include lack of proper procedures and controls, lack of segregation of duties, along with bank reconciliations that are not performed and reviewed in a timely manner. From airport management, of the 140 public use airports in Kansas, 78 are currently eligible for FAA grants. The typical governance used by airports eligible for FAA grants include an airport board, an airport manager, and an airport authority. Policy direction. What we need to define is what the city's vision for the airport is. And once we've established what that vision is, how to oversee that vision. Airport options and looking at our vision, what are our options for the airport? On the surface, some of the options that are presented tonight may seem initially unrealistic. However, we felt it was important to bring those options before you two, allow you to provide directions as the city moves forward. First option is pretty self-explanatory, close the airport. By the way, the challenges that include with federal grants and loss of hangar space in the area. Closure would be difficult, it would be costly, and it would be very time consuming. On the other side of that, if the airport is closed, it does open up 129 acres immediately adjacent to the logistic park casey. Be a possible industrial business park or provide additional housing opportunities. The site also could be used for future city facilities, public works, law enforcement, and parks. If we still desire to have an airport, if the site is closed, it could be possible to relocate the airport further to the west. Section, second option, leave the airport as is as a currently functioning. And what we did that, we would continue working towards the improvements identified in the master plan. Those improvements include additional land acquisition for runway improvements and additional hangars. Utilization of the airport would remain the same. It would continue to cater to recreational flyers and aviation enthusiasts. And with runway improvements and additional hangars, uses would be expected to increase. Our third option would be to update the master plan to increase utilization of the airport. We could market the airport and surrounding properties to encourage businesses, possibly including a small business park and restaurants to locate in close proximity to the airport. Don't know how many of you have been to Miami County, but we got Weeby Smokin' at the airport, great restaurant. A lot of people fly into that restaurant to eat and get their hours. We could accelerate improvements to the airport, additional runways and hangar space. Airport would still cater to recreational flyers, but also be corporate and business friendly. Our fourth option, and this is kind of on the other end of the spectrum, be aggressive in airport updates and utilization. Corporate and business draw to the area. Transition away from recreational flyers and aviation enthusiasts, move to corporate and business customers. Acquire additional property for new terminals, additional runways, and business park. Compete with New Century and Johnson County Executive Airports. With that, staff is seeking council guidance on options to further investigate as the Gardner Municipal Airport as we move forward. Can that be available for questions?
Okay. Well, we're going to open the floor for public comments at this time. If anyone's in attendance that would like to make public comments about the presentation regarding the airport. Now is the time to do it, but as we do have members of the airport commission here. Obviously, they're, I'm sure they stand ready to answer questions if, if we want to direct any of them. But if anybody wants to make public comment now, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
For adding my name on your list. Mayor, Council, my name is Paul Willie. My address is 14285 South of Waverly Road, Gardner, Kansas. I'd just like to comment that I think that you really have a gem out there in respect to a small airport. It's one of those little community in itself also that have a lot of people that are involved in that type of thing. So if I was going to give any input, it would be encourage you to consider, you know, keeping that going and keeping it up the way it needs to be. If there would be any one complaint that I would have is that I've, I've been on that list for over 10 years. There's no, there's no available, so it tells you there's people interested in it. I'd also comment that I think that the folks that are overseeing the operation right now are doing a really good job. I go out there once or twice a week with my children. I've been to different events that are out there. And I, I think that they do a pretty good job of making sure things are working. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Paul.
Hi, Tori Roberts, 17125, Jessica, Gardner, Kansas. Hi, everybody. I wanted to voice, I live by that airport. I've been there for eleven and a half years. I love the airport. I love them as a neighbor. They're great. If I had the choice, I would pick number two, but I'd also pick number three to maybe add a restaurant. I was lucky enough to, I didn't prepare anything, I just winged it right now. I was lucky enough to sit on some of the interviews for the board members. And that really brought up a lot. And it, it wa, it wa, oh gosh, made me awake to what they all do there. It's a great board. It's a great airport. And that's just kind of my opinion. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Tori. Well, no one else coming forward? Questions for Brian or other staff regarding the presentation?
I have a quick one. If we were to move forward with doing something like a mini executive type airport versus Johnson County, how are we situated out there for utilities to tie everything in? I mean, is it, I mean, stuff out there we're going to have to?
Well, the road network, road network would need to be improved.
Right.
You have a bad intersection at Waverly and 175th between the sides and drainage issues out there. That area is extremely plastic. Do you have water lines both the north and south side of 175th? Can't speak regarding energy, but I imagine they're out there.
Okay. So it's not totally out of the realm of possibility?
Not at all.
How would you say with, with what's there existing and the potential improvements to the runways and those things? I mean, how, to compete with someone like Johnson County or some of the surrounding ones like that for corporate type business, would it be pretty extensive to upgrade the runways and everything around it?
Very much so. I think you'd need longer runways, so there'd be a lot of additional property acquisition. In your, in your CDF that was presented, there actually is a, have an aerial photograph showing additional properties both east and west that are currently mostly agricultural in nature where the airport could be expanded to. Or, I mean, I think it'd be hard to, you know, we, we've talked about some of the options not necessarily being realistic. From, from my standpoint, option number four, competition with New Century as well as Johnson County Executive. Three airports in Johnson County that do the same thing, I think, would be a challenge.
So what about then option three? Is it set up right now to take some type of corporate, you know, some types of corporate planes that come in or?
Yeah, it's a.
Yeah, is it set up right now to take a, a small corporate jet?
No. Kind of landlocked between all the different buildings with 56 Highway, you know, the long, it's probably, and then it's like 3,500 feet. That wouldn't qualify to bring in a jet yet, but a lot of small stuff twins and that kind of stuff, you know.
If you did extend the property to the west, I mean, you have a pretty good distance to the west. Again, if you look at the aerial, if there's possibility to. But you are landlocked to west, east side's Waverly, north side's 175th, and the south side, you guys would just take.
Couple of questions that come to mind. I think that it's, it's, more amenities would be nice in the airport, absolutely. I think that'd be, it'd be nice to have a small office park out there. Even some, potentially some residences on the west side of the airport. I know a lot of recreational type fields like this where you can have like, you know, drive-in, you know, or fly-in residences, which would be a real draw. I think that a whole lot of aircraft enthusiasts would love to take some of that property on the west side of the airport and make up, make up a rather nice second tier housing option with a fly-in option for people who want to fly in and out of town on their, on their, on their twin, yes. I think that a whole lot of people would like that. Additional hangars would be a good thing to have on the west side of that north and south runway. And I believe that in the master plan it's included in that, is that correct? So that's, so that'll, that'll definitely help. So there's a lot of potential here, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I think that more involvement of the council in, in trying to help to set those plans would be good for, from the standpoint of realizing its potential. We have a real asset out there. I think someone said that in public comments, and they're absolutely right. We have a real asset there. And to a certain extent, we're kind of underutilizing it, so I'd like to see more of that. I do want to go back to something though, and that, that's somewhat concerning to me, and we've, we've actually talked about this before, and that's the audit findings. We need to fix those audit items. And regardless of what happens with whatever option we choose, and I would probably choose somewhere a combination of two and three, but I think we need to have a little bit better management of the, of the financial side of things. And the leasing, the lease issues that have been identified need to be addressed. And that's just from the standpoint of consistency and making sure that we treat everybody equally and that they have the opportunity or the, the option to be able to take advantage of leasing opportunities that come free, whether it's through non-payment or whether it's through somebody divesting themselves of, of the hangar or whatever. So I think there's going to be some changes in that area. I'm not sure exactly what, what all the council's going to be, but I think that we'll probably want to address that. That's all I have.
Well, one of the things that was in the, the council discussion forum was management options as well. And I didn't see that presented this evening. There were airport options. And I, I think everybody would be interested in seeing the airport either option two or, or possibly some kind of version of option three, where it gets a little more beyond just the recreational flyer as an amenity, but the, so the, I think choosing between the, the four options, I think maybe we still need, we would need to come up with an idea of the, the option that's a combination of two and three, actually.
I think that's, yeah, that's what I'm agreeing.
And I'd be interested to hear what the people from the airport board have to, have to say about that. I know they've got a comprehensive, I mean, a comprehensive plan, a development plan in place. But does it take into consideration, I think it does take into consideration lengthening the runway and adding hangars? But, you know, does it, does the plan deal with amenities to the airport? Whether it's an update to the terminal building or anything, any, any other kind of, you know, whether it's a restaurant or retail or whatever. And yeah, actually, if you, if you step to the, the microphone, if you've got something to say.
Yeah, Ray Dur. I live here in town, and I have an airplane out there, and I just love the airport that's out there. But one of the biggest things that it could probably use is if you can see all those old buildings, right? I mean, that hangar was originally built a long time ago, and it's still being used for service today. So they, you know, maintain a bunch of airplanes there, you know, as, as a business. But one of the things that could really be used is a new terminal facility. Now, it's going to be kind of hard to tear down what's already there because it's functional, but it's just not, you know, washrooms are horrible for residents flying through and transitioning here. They park their airplanes on the ramp, they tie them down, they go into town. You know, family comes and picks them up. There's quite a bit of that. There'd be a lot more of that if, you know, they built a new terminal facility. And one of the options there is if we had to land, you know, we have to have our runway clearance zones to the south, which backs up to 56 Highway. But that other property we're buying there for those clearance zones could certainly be used to build the terminal facility off 56 Highway, which would answer your question about getting access to facilities and water and sewer and all that kind of stuff. Would make a lot more sense in my opinion. So that, that would be a huge change. The property to the east of Long Waverly is where the master plan has another 20 hangars allocated if we buy that plan, which we currently do not own today. So, thank you.
Does the, and Dan, maybe you can, you know, does the master plan take into consideration an update to the terminal building or, or anything like that?
Most of all, runways, hangars, taxiways, but the facilities you've got to have supply.
The, the airport master plan does include, section number 7.1. And it's actually a kind of a summary of the projects, phase one, phase two, phase three, and now through 20 years. And it does include additional hangars, taxiways, runway improvements, but not improvements to the terminal itself. And one of the, one of the issues that we do receive a lot of grant funding for, improvements to the airport, those have to be used for aeronautical purposes. And so if we were looking at trying to encourage business to acquire land for non-aeronautical purposes, Greg can answer that, but I don't believe FAA grants would be used for that.
Did, did they be utilized for something like a, a terminal? I mean, is it improvements to existing infrastructure or?
I'm Brad Weisberger. I'm a airport consultant that the airport board has hired with professional engineering consultants. FAA grant program really is designed towards runways, taxiways, pavement issues. Hangars and terminal buildings are eligible, but you've got to have all your other airfield items in it. So in order to get to those dollars for terminal buildings, you would have to have your runway in great condition, your taxiway issues are all resolved. Markings, lighting, all those things would have to be in top notch shape before they allow you to spend any money on a, on a terminal building.
How far, how far away from, are we from, from being top notch where we could move on to something like the terminal building?
Well, I've been actually working.
Twenty years of the master plan?
We're probably quite a ways away still. We have land acquisition in the airport board. And we did first master plan, I think in 2006, somewhere in there. So we've got to buy land and protect our borders, so to speak. And that's what they've been doing. The FAA's been just throwing out small grants. And they've been diligent in buying properties. A couple, one of the homes came up that was for sale by orders, and they bought that one. And so they've been working, whittling the way at it, I guess would be a good term. But there hasn't been a real big push to take a plunge and really buy a lot of property and try to get the 20-year plan moved up to a faster pace.
Sure, let me say.
Dave Dayton with the airport board. And as far as our, we're pretty frugal with our money. And we're constantly saving for our 10% because that's a match for all of these FAA, any grants we get. So we always want to have our 10% ready for, for a grant that we get. And so, and that comes, sometimes that's $30,000 or $40,000 a year. So, so we save that, we try to save that back or at least $50,000 a year for a grant. And when the big runway comes in, we're going to need more than that, so we're going to be having to save several years for it probably. But we, with, with all of our volunteer help, we don't have any overhead except for a part-time employee. And, and so all of the money that we, we don't use for, for improvements out there, we, we save back for our 10%.
Right. Good to hear. Thanks.
Let me, I, I just have a general more, I guess, kind of a new straight-up type question that, and I don't know if this is, is this for. But if we, if we do move forward with kind of a two, three option, and we put together some plans that would say this is, these are the types of things that we would like to see out there. And even if that maybe includes a new terminal or what have you, would this be built into the city, I mean, CIP plan for future improvement? Or does this have to remain separate and be put into the airport master plan?
We could, the city could provide the match through city resources. So we could have that to be part of it, much like we would with other funds that we use where we have it as part of our budget as well. We have water, wastewater projects, although we don't use general funds for them. So we could.
One, one thing that's a result of the audit finding, it's also part of my legal opinion as well, is that because of the structure of the airport, the, all, all the finances have to be part and parcel of the city's budget. So if it's not going to be a, if it's not going to be a grant-funded terminal or something like that, then it would need to be an expenditure which complied with, you know, every aspect of the city's budget laws, cash basis laws. If it was going to be a capital improvement like a new terminal, then roll that into a CA.
So, so for instance, I mean, I, I kind of envision that it would work similar to what we have with the part master plan. So you have a plan, it, the airport becomes kind of a entity in that sense. But we pick projects out of that plan that we see as a priority. So I think what I'm hearing is that could function very similarly in that. Okay.
Yes, I'm, I'm a little bit confused on what, what we're talking about when we're saying a combination of two and three. Because the two things are almost mutually exclusive, and we can't leave the airport as is and do number three.
I, I guess from my perspective, if I looked at it as more of a progression, you know, that therefore would remain kind of as a, that we would evolve into more of an option three. My question is more, so what does that do? You go to an option three, what does that do to the personal aircraft that's out there today? I mean, is it, do you eliminate that? Is there a, can you do both? Yeah, that's nice. Both of them function in that realm.
So I guess what I was looking for is clarification. My, my idea when, when I heard that in my, in my head was we're going to update the master plan with the hope of, of encouraging businesses and small airports and, or, or small business parks, restaurants, things like that, to coexist with the existing recreational flyers. But we still want to have that small airport feel, but we want to try to bring in some outside business and.
Absolutely. That's, that's, the amenities would be a real draw. I'm also bringing home out some hope that we might be able to have some residences out there. I mean, folks that, folks, I mean, I'm looking here, there's a, there's a high-end subdivision out west of Chicago called Arrow Estates. And folks fly in, now they're, now sometimes they're enthusiasts, sometimes they're, they use their plane for business. But they fly in, they park it at their house in their own hangar. They, you know, get in their car, they drive around, go use restaurants and all sorts of other stuff. And then they get in their plane if they have to go out of town and fly out of their house. And those are very, very high-end homes. And I don't think that there's any place like that anywhere in the Kansas City metro area.
Well, not in Childs, but some have very many homes on it, and they call them air parks.
Yeah.
Okay, and they design basically.
Okay, and they design basically the homes around the runway where you have separate roads and separate taxiways for the airplanes. But out at Gardner, being a public airport, you have to have like through-the-fence agreements.
Yeah.
You know, for that land for the west, if you could do something like that.
That's the land I'm thinking of.
That would be for all that.
So, I mean, there's, there's other ways we could evolve the vision of the airport other than just, you know, adding a restaurant or two or adding an office park, but, you know.
Which lends again to updating the master plan, which is where we kinda would come in with that.
But that's the option three, that's the portions of option three we're talking about. It will never become an airport that, to me, would never become an airport that would not be catering to enthusiasts and recreational flyers, because we don't have the space for corporate, you know, airport.
So if I were to update this option three to incorporate option two, and probably just add the last clause in option two, catering to recreational flyers, I would just add that to option three. And then corporate and business interests or corporate and business aviation, that's, that's anything from, from a single-engine pipe up through business jets. But we know that business jets are not gonna operate out of there easily. There's no reason for any land that, yeah. We can't even build a jet there, so, yeah. That's, I guess that's what I would do, you know. That's pretty much what I'm gonna do.
One other question, and Brian, I'm not sure if you know this or if Mr. Hayden knows this, but, you know, we talked about waiting lists and we've talked about this, I think, since I've been on council, that there's pretty little turnover as far as people out there. So have we done some analysis that looks at the payback on putting additional hangars out there? And what sort of, I mean, I guess, when I start thinking about this, there's a natural priority in my mind. And if there's, if the answer is more hangars so that we can generate more revenue out there, then that helps facilitate some of this other stuff as well.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't personally done the analysis on it. I think we may have to acquire some additional property before we can actually put the hangars there.
Before we need, before we talk about additional hangars, we need to make sure that we're managing the hangars that we have.
We have approximately one hundred IT hangar spaces available outside.
And all of them are full, correct?
Yeah, correct. I think they built the last hangar, it was built?
Two thousand and four, four or five.
Yeah, four, and it was?
Yeah, and it takes over twenty-five years for someone to pay them off because they're on rental income.
And that was, it's supposed to be twenty aircraft, and I think he went through about thirty-three names.
Thirty-five names to fill twenty hangars.
The thing that concerns me about the management of the hangars is, is if we have a ten-year-plus waiting list, and we're the only airport in the area that I know of with that long of a waiting list, something tells me that something's not being done there.
That's not true. The reason is for such a long list, but there's so many people.
Let me get you to come to the-
Yes, please, please.
Yeah, if you're gonna make comments from the audience, please step to the microphone.
I personally look after the hangar list and I've done it all, put it in Excel. I track everybody who wants to be on the upgrade list or, you know, a new person coming into town that wants to be on that list. And when I first moved here in ninety-nine, I put my name on that list and it took me seven years to get a hangar. And the only reason, when they built the twenty new ones, I was the first person not to get one. So there was forty-four names that came off that list for those twenty, and I still didn't get one. I didn't get one till a year later. But I think the reason the list is so long, if you put your name on the OJC slash IXD list, they have one combined list for those two airports at Johnson County. But not a lot of people flying small airplanes like flying out of those airports. For one, they're towered airports, and a lot of people like flying out of non-towered airports like Gardner, where we have a lot of tail draggers, and a lot of people like flying off of grass. So there's just, and the camaraderie out at Gardner is totally different than what you see at OJC and New Century, which are more business-based or people who are there, they go to fly and they leave, that's it. They don't hang around. Whereas Gardner's really a friendly community of pilots and people who enjoy flying.
I've got a follow-up to Lee's question, and that is, you know, the current waiting list right now is how deep?
It's forty-eighty deep. And then there's about ten or so on the upgrade list. So when a new hangar comes on, I go through the upgrade list because they get priority over somebody new. And then we have to call down through the names and find out. And sometimes they're that long because you, you don't audit everybody on the list every time, you know, like once a month, because you gotta call everybody and you don't have a hangar to give them. So you're just wasting their time. So when one comes up, I gotta go down through the list and find out, do they want to pass? Do they want it? Do they move away?
Sure.
So there's a lot of that. But that's why it took forty-four names to fill twenty hangars.
Okay.
So even if there was eighty on it, probably thirty-five to, maybe thirty-five would want them.
Sure. The other question I have is, you know, we're talking about increasing capacity of hangars, and Lee makes a very good point about, you know, are we maximizing the value of the hangar space we currently have? And that is not necessarily in utilization, but maybe in terms of our bill, of our pricing.
Flying demand.
Yeah, exactly. If the, if the prices are low, if the price point is low, you're gonna have a great amount of demand. Have there been any talk about adjusting those?
Yeah, we've talked about that. I mean, they were, they were updated, you know, quite a few years ago when we built the new ones and stuff. But, yeah, you know, in comparison to IXD and other ones, like, if you put your name on the IXD list, you might be only on there in a year and you might get your name on the hangar.
Yeah.
Right? But a lot of people just prefer not to fly out of those type of airports, so. But, yeah, it's something we always consider every time we, you know, fairness across the board, like we're doing improvements to the hangars, like adding doors, so we jack up the price because we had to put electricity in those, and we put bifolds automatic doors. So we adjusted the price on those hangars. So, yeah, it's something we keep in mind all the time.
Do we have consistent pricing schedules for these hangars? Or is it kind of like a case-by-case basis?
No, we have, we have discrete prices based on what you get. Whether you get a brand-new hangar with a concrete floor versus one that's got a bifold door and a dirt floor versus some of the older ones. So there's like five different iterations of hangars as they got built over the last forty or fifty years.
And the arrangements of those people who are leasing the hangars, can they sublease those hangars to other?
Yes, Gardner does allow subleasing. So that's the other reason for a lot of the low turnover. If somebody is in-between airplanes, you know, they can sublease it to somebody for a year while they finish theirs or figure out what to buy next or stuff like that. So, yeah, that's-
Are subleases allowed by the airport board by laws?
Yes, it's by the agreement, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a limit on how long they can sublease?
No.
Is that a best practice for airports across the state or Midwest or country?
We can't control it. Well, if the county thinks that they don't allow subleasing, then I can tell you, there's a whole bunch of subleasing over at the county airports. I mean, we'd have to have a police force to, you know.
Well, the concern I've got when we bring up subleasing is that, you know, Gardner Airport's a community airport. We want to stay a community airport. The problem that we've got is that there's folks that potentially could sublease to people from out of state who are just, you know, who are flying in and utilize the airport for their own purposes and leaving. But it doesn't allow an individual who is a local in this area, who's been on that waiting list for five, six, seven years, to get an opportunity to, you know, to hangar their aircraft there. Am I correct in that? I mean, out of state, out of county, you know.
And another thing I wanted to do on the, on the list since, you know, joining the board, I guess I used to have it years ago, is to give people that live in Gardner, you know, first priority on the list, right? Instead of somebody from Lenexa, you know, that just wants to be at a smaller, friendlier airport.
Sure. Thank you.
One more question.
Dale, Dale wanted to say something. Dale, come on up.
Yeah, I'm Dale Rose, one of the airport board members. Just a point of interest here, the airport was turned over from the city to the board in, from about eighty-two, eighty-three. Since then, the airport has put out about two million dollars, I put a pencil to it to the day, roughly two million dollars with improvements, what's not cost the city a dime. And it was all from hangar rent, you know, because we don't make anything on fuel. And it was just a good fair management from the prior board members over the years. And so it has worked out real well. Like I said, we've upgraded the hangars, built new hangars, overlaid runway, improved the runways because it was gravel at one time, now it's a thirty-foot, six-thousand-foot runway out there. So it's just, just a point of interest there.
You bet. Thanks, Dale.
Thanks, Dale.
One other question, is there a, I'm assuming that based on the airport as it is today, even with some of the planned expansions of the runway and so forth, that we get to a point where we're kind of at maximum capacity? Do we know, I mean, as far as the number of planes that are out there and that are coming in and out, is there, I mean, is there something that governs that as far as traffic and so forth?
No, not really. I mean, traffic, you know, we don't have a lot of takeoffs and landings out of Gardner, you know, being small, you know, but the people transient and stuff will just tie down there in the ramp area. And also certainly having a new terminal with a larger ramp area, more people could tie down. But we got about four tie-down spots that people transit. And one of the things I would love to see is a airport, your courtesy car. A lot of airports you fly into have a courtesy car that you can put gas in them and drive them into town, whether it be a mile or two to go get lunch if there's not a restaurant right at the field. So a lot of things like that for the friendly airport. But, yeah, Gardner gets used a lot as a transfer airport. You know, people going to Oshkosh stop there for gas. We usually try to keep our fuel prices low to attract people to fly into Gardner versus some of the other airports around, certainly cheaper than IXD or OJC, so.
So there's no, so I guess we have about a hundred planes kind of in and out of there today. So if that doubled to two hundred, you would see an issue from a capacity perspective?
Not really, not really, no. Not unless somebody's running a business that's constantly doing stuff. I mean, we had a flight school there, so they, you know, they had airplanes on the ramp and they were doing takeoff and landings, doing their practicing and stuff. But it doesn't really add too much to the traffic in that term. But in terms of, you know, expansion, you obviously gotta have the land to have the hangars.
Okay.
That's what we don't have right now, is any more land to build the hangars on.
When it comes to the management options that have been listed before, how is what we're currently doing different than an airport authority being established? I guess it's just that the city hasn't invade all the properties of the airport?
Yeah, I can address it. So, under the state statutes, there are kind of two different statutes that authorize or enable airport authorities. This airport could fall into one of those statutory provisions because, as Brian went through on the history of it, it was surplus property that was ultimately granted to the city way back when. And so it would qualify to incorporate as an airport association. The current structure doesn't satisfy that requirement for several reasons. Number one, the enabling legislation specifically dictates that the ordinance that creates the airport association has to cite the statute and indicate that it is creating an airport authority pursuant to that statutory authority. The ordinance that we have that created the code section, which enabled the structure that we have now, did not do that. The other piece is that you have to, like you said, grant all right property and interest in the land to the airport association. And what it does is, and there are several examples of this around the state, is when you create that airport authority pursuant to that statutory procedure, it becomes its own municipal entity. You as the city no longer have control over it. It doesn't become part of your budgeting. It's, you deed it away, the asset, you can pull it back in, I believe it's after at least ten years, by dissolving it. But short of that, it's, I mean, it's kind of hands-off. It becomes its complete autonomy in its operations. And that is not the structure that we have. We have a lease and the ordinance that we created, our airport authority with, did not do so pursuant to that statute. In fact, our ordinance was passed before that enabling legislation was even enacted by the council legislature, so.
So our ordinance was passed in nineteen fifty-eight, and the enabling legislation was?
It's like nineteen sixty-five, something like that.
From, in the, the model, like, where there's an airport manager, does that airport manager, are they a city employee or are they a employee that reports to the board?
I think you can actually do it two different ways. There could be a city employee hiring an airport manager via the city department or we could contract that out.
I said we just give Brian his wings, just put another thing on your plate. Really gotta volunteer and successfully.
You know, I'm really interested in the accounting function. Part of it, which only would be pertinent in the first two options under the management option. We've already got a, isn't what we have already an airport board system of management?
Yours is a little different because you've got this corporate structure. You know, the ordinance that created the airport authority here, not only created a board, which is created under the authority of the governing body, it also allowed for the creation of this separate corporation, not-for-profit corporation, which is?
Five, one, two, three?
Well, we'll talk about that in executive session. But that is, that is different than, I think, the other structures that the department is looking at.
Okay.
I don't think I would, I would favor establishing an airport board.
I don't think so. I don't think an asset handed off is a, is a good idea at all. Well, it is an asset. And I mean, I think that all of us today, as well as the folks that are from the airport board, would agree that this is kind of a thing that, you know, community asset, it's something that the community benefits from, it's a unique construct. And I think that we need to work together, both city and board, to make it, you know, as, you know, as close to its potential as we possibly can. My concern is the accounting issues. And if we can get the accounting issues squared away, that would be my preference, you know, to kind of keep it as close to the current form as possible and make it statutorily correct.
Or is that something that our finance and accounting department could handle if that's, if we so chose?
We do whatever you tell us to do. However, I might be coming to you at some point and think, gee, I really could use a little extra help. But I don't know that yet. So, that's a fair enough answer. If you say do it, we will do it.
Streets, sidewalks, stormwater and runway.
No, no, we still have an airport board. Their plan hides the way they are. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll go ahead and take a brief break before we begin council meeting. We'll start that at seven o'clock. And for those of you that don't usually make it out here, I think it's coming out this evening. Always good to see faces in the audience, so.